We now call this council meeting to order if you could please. All right, three, two, one. Good evening. We are now calling this council meeting to order. If you could please rise even from home if you're able and pay attention to Councilman Emerson for the invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, and for tonight's invocation, I am privileged to introduce my friend Joe Hishma. And Joe is the lead pastor of Fellowship Bible Church, which is at 10th and Irish. Joe moved here from Chattanooga, Tennessee in 2002. But those of you who know him know that he grew up in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, and although he grew up there, he's actually a lifelong Chiefs fan and does not like to pack it up. So, but Joe, Joe has been, anybody that knows him knows that he has a heart for people and his church, his church's mission, our, the church that I belong to's mission is to help people find and follow Jesus Christ, and I know that's a passion of Joe's as well. And I know he's also said it's his stated goal to bring, bring a renewal, spiritual renewal to Topeka. So, Joe, take us away. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thanks for having me, Tony and everyone. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we recognize you as we begin this meeting. Your, your word is clear that you are just and good, you're loving and you're righteousness. You know everything about us and choose to love us anyway. So tonight, we seek your wisdom and we seek your insight beyond what we're capable to see and understand. May you guide us in this meeting and the decisions that this group makes. We need your help as our community is stressed and disrupted, frustrated and hurting. We need you to comfort and encourage us to lead well our citizens to a hope and a future. I thank you for our councilmen and women, our mayor, our city manager and all their staff. May you use them in our community to do justice, to love kindness, to walk humbly with you. I ask this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Joe.
All right, Brent, I think that you have to show the flag, but, oh, there we go. There comes a flag. And we now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we move on to the roll call.
Mayor Dala Isla?
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Here.
Valdivia Akala?
Here.
Ortiz?
Here.
Emerson?
Here.
Padilla?
Here.
Nager?
Here.
Dobler?
Here.
Duncan?
Here.
And Lesser?
Here.
We have 10 present.
All right, we now move on to presentations. City manager, if you could talk about that. Yes?
Madam Mayor, I would like to make an ocean motion to add an item app, an action item to the agenda this evening related to the city manager's authority pursuant to speaking with us with code 10 dash dot 60 dash 010B to waive enforcement of certain parking regulations in the downtown area.
Okay, is that in form of a motion, Councilman Lesser?
Yes, it is.
All right, do we have a second to add an item in the agenda? Deputy Mayor, we have a second. Just for clarification by legal, do we have to suspend the city, the council rules in order for us to proceed?
No, Mayor, you do not because there is a provision in the governing body rules that provides for the addition of items if you present it by a governing body member and six members vote in favor.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Lesser or a second by Deputy Mayor. At this point in time, does anybody have any questions to clarify with Councilman Lesser prior to proceeding with the vote? Councilwoman Hiller to be followed by Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala. Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not familiar with this. Is this an emergency?
Councilwoman Lesser.
No, it is, I, I don't know that I would deem it as, as an emergency. I would deem that it's time sensitive for the holiday seasons, what I would deem it.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala.
So, thank you, Mayor. So, can you expand on it just a little bit more?
Councilwoman Lesser.
Yeah, I certainly can. Basically, when we get to the action item, the item will be to extend the hour of free parking on Topeka or on Topeka on Kansas Avenue and the side streets from two to four hours beginning tomorrow until January 3rd.
Got it. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions for the councilman? Seeing none, we proceed to add the item on the agenda for further discussion later on. If we could proceed by the vote.
Mayor Dala Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have 10 yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much. My apologies to Councilwoman Lesser. I knew this was coming. So, thank you very much for your grace. At this point in time, we do move on to the presentations of a city of Topeka financial update. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, Steve Wade is here, Budget and Performance Manager, to go through the financial update for year 2020. And also Director of Administrative and Financial Services Jessica Lemandola is here also. Take it away, Steve.
Jessica, do you want to, you want to launch it?
No, it's okay. Thank you.
So, governing body, you received earlier today an update for our projections for end of year. It's a long and exhaustive update of about 16 pages. I won't bore you with all the details tonight. But if you've taken a quick look at it, you realize that our financial position has improved over earlier this year. Some improvements with sales tax has helped us on the revenue side, and we're seeing some additional savings on personnel side. That's putting us into a positive situation as opposed to having to go into reserves. That's our projection right now. I'd be happy to go into details if you, with you if you want, but I also know that you have a full agenda tonight.
Questions or comments for Mr. Wade? Councilman Duncan.
So what, can you, I don't need a lot of detail on this, but hopefully it stands and it shows that there will be a a positive ending balance to our budget. What traditionally do we do with those funds? Is there something automatically that happens or is that up to the governing body at the end of the year? What is that process, having been the first time I will have gone through that?
I'll go ahead and take that if that's all right, Steve. Historically, at least over the last decade, surpluses have been used to supplement the reserves in the general fund because of the, the reduced general fund position that we started with about a decade ago. As this governing body and members of the public have recognized, we are currently above our target. So I would expect that in terms of accounting with the CAFER, if this surplus is realized, it'll be within the general fund as our reserves. And then if the governing body would like to allocate it to something that some, you know, obviously we can receive that direction. Best practices, typically that type of surplus would be used to fund one-time expenses rather than ongoing expenditures.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? All right, seeing none, we then enter the consent agenda. Item A, if the clerk would read.
Is a resolution introduced by city manager Brent Trout declaring the entire boundary of the city of Topeka for 2020 minutes are the be our minutes of the regular meeting of December 1, 2020, and there's a list of cereal, malt, beverage and dance hall applications sent via email this afternoon, and staff is recommending approval.
We have the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of the body? Councilwoman Ortiz makes a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Second by Councilwoman Nager. Additional comments or questions with regards to the consent agenda? Seeing none, we proceed by voting.
Mayor Dala Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have 10 yes, motion passes.
Now we move on to the action items. Action item A of the clerk would read.
Is a public hearing and ordinance introduced by city manager Brent Trout relating to the vacation of a 70-foot wide section of public right-of-way for southwest Harrison Street that is adjacent with 2,000 Southwest Topeka Boulevard in the city of Topeka, Kansas, Shawnee County.
City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill Feinder, Planning and Development Director, will review the request for vacation of this portion of public right-of-way. Bill? Okay, I thought I saw Bill on here. Nope, he's, he's still, he's actually trying to connect, it looks like. Bill, are you on here?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you now.
Sorry, we had a little freeze up, so I'm calling on my phone.
Okay.
The vacation that's proposed is by Sunflower Rental. They are proposing a vacation of a 70-foot wide right-of-way for Harrison Street that's unused and unimproved. The, the purpose behind it is for them to make an addition to their building, which will not require a setback variance if it is passed. So, the utilities for water and sewer are not in this right-of-way. The only thing that would need to be preserved, an easement for, are a gas main and storm sewer. So, the other half of the street, if vacated, would go to Shawnee County for, this is adjacent to a park. But this would allow the expansion for Sunflower to take place. So, no other property owners are affected and staff would recommend approval provided the easements are retained. I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Feinder? Seeing no questions, there is nobody signed up to speak on this. However, this is a public hearing, so if there is anybody that would like to make any statements, this is your time to do so. Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Bill, how does that affect the park or does it affect the park right in there?
Councilwoman Ortiz, it, it does not. If anything, the county would, like I said, retain half, which if you look at the aerial, they basically, you have Shimer Park there that, that, that more or less covers half of that right-of-way right now. So, I think the owner from Sunflower would be talking to the county in the future about potentially acquiring their half of this, but it does not affect the park. In fact, I think there's an easement for park access that will be retained as part of this vacation.
Okay, um, I think that's my district. That's what I was trying to figure out. Do you have an aerial you could show on, on?
I would love to.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know. I, I froze up here, so I don't have.
I'm with you. I'm just making sure that I'm, I'm with you. Okay, and, and staff is recommending approval, right?
Yes, we are, ma'am.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Again, I just want to make sure that once we have asked all the questions, that if there is nobody else that would like to make any public comment, aside from Bilbo Baggins, my dog, that obviously wanted to make some remarks, we need to make sure that anybody that wants to make some statements, thus so that we can close the public hearing and then proceed with the vote and with the motion. Hey, seeing that there's no comments, I've asked three times. Councilwoman Ortiz?
I'll just make a motion to approve.
Okay, the public hearing is closed. We have a motion by Councilwoman Ortiz and we have a second by Councilwoman Nager. Do we have, now that we have a motion and a second, Deputy Mayor, did you have any remarks? Okay, seeing no remarks, anybody else that now that we have a closed public hearing, any other comments before we proceed with the voting? All right, we call the vote.
Mayor Dala Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have 10 yes, motion carries.
All right, we move on to yet another public hearing. Item B, if the clerk would read.
Is a public hearing for the purpose of hearing and answering objections of taxpayers relating to the proposed amended use of funds and appropriation ordinance introduced by city manager Brent Trout, approving and adopting certain amendments to the operating budget for the city of Topeka for the year 2020 and appropriating those amounts for the purposes set there for hearing.
City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As we head towards the end of the year, one of the things we must do is make amendments to our budget. And so tonight, Steve Wade, our Budget and Performance Manager, is here to discuss the amendments that are necessary for us at the end of this year. Steve?
Good evening. We've got four funds that we need authorization to increase spending levels on it. By state statute, the money can't be spent without your authority. You've received this in, in your pocket. There are four funds, the Federal Funds Exchange, the Historical Asset Fund, the Information Technology Fund, and then an establishment of a CARES Fund. In, in each case, we're asking approval to increase our spending authority and would, willing to take questions for any of them.
Questions for Mr. Wade or Ms. Lemandola? Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. And, and thank you. I had a good meeting with Steve, but I have had some exchange with the city manager as well. I want some, some clarification for myself, but maybe for all of us in terms of where the COVID money fits in here and a couple of different questions with that. One, how are we doing? We, we had some funding, a substantial amount of funding that had to be spent before the end of the year. And, and I, we've got some reports on that and I'm concerned about whether it's going to be gone, whether we're going to lose it, and whether there are some adjustments that we can make. And, and that was prompted because we've got this eight-point-some-million that we're putting in a special fund and we're, we're spending it down. And so I had wondered also, since we, I don't know what's going to be in another bill, and I want to be able to collect as much as we can, of course, in the future. And so I, I think we had an explanation here, but we collected this money because of police and fire expenses, but now we're crediting other ones against it. Are we assured that we would be able to, if there's new COVID money for related expenses, that we could still voucher this, this money that we're spending right now? Those are two questions, really.
Sure. Steve, I'll go ahead and, and take the first one. In terms of the spending deadline, we have, we, we have met that deadline. So I've discussed this with, I believe, almost every council member as we were going through the process to make sure that everyone was aware of how we were handling it. And so in that process, we decided to submit police and fire expenses for our portion of the CARES Act allocation that Shawnee County allocated to us from the state, from the federal government. And so when we submitted for reimbursement for police and fire and we received that reimbursement, that, that is sufficient to meet the 12, the end of the year deadline. In terms of the requests that you're seeing today, we are requesting to move an equal or same amount of general fund monies out to a separate fund to help support the, the, the costs associated with responding to the pandemic. So, the, the grant money that we received essentially from the federal government went directly into the general fund. It was used against police and fire. We, we have expenses that we need to make that are necessary for the city to respond to the, the current health emergency. And so for a variety of reasons, we're requesting that we put it into a separate fund. One of those is that it's from a year-to-year basis, the police and fire is an ongoing cost. So it's helpful to maintain that expense within the general fund so that we don't see a huge up and down. The reason we're using it, requesting to use it as a separate fund, we've consulted with our outside auditors. We've gotten feedback from professionals within the city that deal a great deal with federal money and then also with our internal accounting team. And by isolating it into one fund, we're able to more accurately, and quite frankly, there's an ease of accounting when you have your revenue in one fund and your expense coming out of that same fund. You all were distributed a memo earlier today that highlighted the different areas of spending that we've so far essentially committed to. All of that was in the advisement that we provided the governing body back in July and then the follow-up conversations I've had since then, and in particular in October. So in that memo, we have, I believe, at this point, about 2.7 million that we anticipate will be rolled over into 2021. And we, our plan is to utilize that in 2021 for the public health emergency. In terms of future stimulus or help from the federal government for locals, in my discussions with the GFOA and then other committees that we work with, while the conversation has definitely ramped up and there appears to be a greater appreciation for the need that local communities are facing, we still don't have an agreement. So at this point, we're not anticipating additional aid. That doesn't mean it won't happen. There's definitely a lot more agreement happening at the federal level. But as of today, we don't have it. The way that we've handled the CARES Act money is consistent with how many communities across the country have, and we don't anticipate that there's any impact for our ability to receive future aid.
Okay, if, if I could clarify on that, then since these expenses that we are making out of that fund are not what was reimbursed for, I realize we can't, we don't have a crystal ball, but theoretically, those would be eligible for PPE type of reimbursement if that comes up again because they're expenses out of our funds. That's where I was trying to figure out.
Jessica?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm not sure I understand your question. What we were, received reimbursement for was police and fire, which is consistent with the CARES Act.
Right.
We have other purchases that we need to make to respond to the public health emergency. Those are, those are funded from general fund monies.
And, and so therefore, any purchases that we've made other than the police and fire expenses, which we've been reimbursed for, if there were an opportunity with the bookkeeping that we have, we should hopefully be able to, to voucher for those as well. That, that's where I was going.
I don't see a reason why we cannot, as long as they would be consistent with the guidelines that the federal government passed.
Okay, thank you. If I could ask, related to that, there is money still left in, in the budget that you have for the, what you're calling the CARES restricted fund. Yet we're, we're talking about taking $100,000 for the IT fund out of the general fund balance. Do we really need to do that if we have money in the CARES fund?
We're not asking to take $100,000 out of the general fund to pay for IT. We're asking for additional authorization outside of the IT fund. The, the IT director does not believe that he will need to utilize that additional authority. However, given the way that the year has gone and how close we are to exhausting that budget, we thought it was, it was fiscally responsible to ask for that, that approval in the event we need it.
Okay, and the, the other question I had, if I may, about the, the other CARES money, we got some, and, and I don't know where else to ask this. We had money to give out through nonprofits, for instance, for rent and utility money, and it doesn't appear that they've spent anywhere near their allocation. And I, I couldn't remember whether that was money that was expiring on December 31st or whether it's still going to be available in 2021 to disperse.
I can take that one. It will be available. It is not going to end in 20, at the end of 20. I think it, it would go till the end of 21. I'm looking for, Corey sent me an email on that today. Trying to see if I can find it. But I know it stated that we would not lose that money in 20. It would be available through 21 at least.
Okay, and, and so are we coordinating what we're, we're dispersing ourselves from the city with, and referring to and supporting those other agencies for their disbursements?
Yeah, we've done a number of different types of things where we're referring them to the agency that can, that can help them the best based on the guidelines that are established for each organization. And accessing the best one for them is, I guess, the best way to put it. Most people, a lot of people will probably have an easier time qualifying for the basic needs program versus the ones that are the money that's available from each of the agencies. But we, I think, are online based on what they predicted to go through that expenditure. I'll, I have the email from Corey and with everything else going on today, I did not send, send it out, but I will tomorrow, that has the specific detail on how much has been expended by each organization. And, and then both in the area of HESG, which is the normal funding, and then the HESG. So, yes, and I, yeah, it'll go, and now that I'm reading it further, goes through 2022. So we have more time to do it.
That's what I was worried about. We, I think you did send that email out, actually. At least I got some of those reports. I just was worried as we were balancing things year-end, if there was something we needed to do to try and not lose some of that money, but if it lasts until 2022, we're good. That, that answers my question.
Yeah, we have two years from our grant agreement signing to be able to spend the funds. So that'll be well into 2022.
Okay, so everything we had that, that had the deadline is spent?
Well, in, yeah, it's, it's been appropriately claimed, would be the way that I would phrase it. According to the way it looks on the books, it's been appropriately spent and it's been reimbursed to us and it's available. But we are continuing to use some of those funds in order to be able to do other items that we need to do to support the effort, such as helping our citizens and also doing the right things for our employees, improving their work areas and/or improving what they have available to them to work from home, if they're working from home. So, that's what we're doing. And I think so far, we're really hitting all areas that we need to hit to be able to do a proper response, keep our city operations going, utilizing the funding appropriately. It's, it's been a good process so far.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody has other questions or comments with regards to this item? Okay, seeing no additional comments or questions on this. What is the pleasure of the body?
Mayor, did you?
Public hearing. At this point in time, this is still a public hearing, which means that if somebody did not speak up, sign up to speak, you can still speak. The opportunity to do so is now. Anybody in this call can make any comments. Going once, going twice. And at this point in time, we close the public hearing, which allows us then to have a motion and proceed with the vote. If memory recalls correctly, somebody had raised their hand to make a motion. No? Okay.
I'll move approval.
So we have Deputy Mayor making a motion. Do we have a second? Councilman Lesser seconds this motion. Additional comments or questions with regards to this item on the agenda? Seeing none, we proceed by voting.
Mayor Dala Eastla?
Yes.
Councilmember Siller?
Yes.
Valdivia Aqua?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have 10 yes, motion carries.
Okay, we now move on to item C, if the clerk would read.
C is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, establishing a service fee levy for 2021 relating to the Capital City Downtown Business Improvement District.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, this is continuation of, consideration of continuation of our downtown business improvement district. And joining us tonight is Vince Frye to discuss their desire to continue this. Vince?
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Appreciate the opportunity to come before you again this year to review the BID for 2020. I believe that you all received a copy of my presentation. But if you don't mind, I would like to kind of talk specifically about a couple of things on that, that report. Let me pull up my, let me share this room with you, hopefully, real quick.
There you go. Okay.
Very good. All right. Well, those of you that maybe knew to the council or people viewing, the BID was created back in 1986 by the, the city. And it is overseen by a, an advisory board. You can see the names of those people that have been appointed by the mayor and approved by the council that are currently serving. Ken Scott with Capital Federal is serving as our chair currently. We, um, nothing's moving. Here we go. Pull that up again.
Don't feel bad, Vince. It happens to all of us.
There it is. Okay. The, um,
Damn short timers.
I never considered myself the best IT person. I apologize. But the advisory board every year provides a budget that they submit to you as well as a program of services. You can see the services there, and I'd be glad to answer any questions throughout this presentation that you might have. As I said, it was created in, in 1986. But in 1995, the city decided that they did not have the, the resources nor the, the personnel to manage the BID, and they approached DTI to see if we would take it over, which we did, and have been doing so ever since 1995. Well, certainly, 2020 has been an unusual year, and we really have emphasized on keeping downtown clean and promoting it as, as a safe environment for visitors. You probably all have seen Paul Cervantes, our maintenance supervisor who works diligently every day, Monday through Saturday, cleaning throughout the district. He has been with us for about seven years and is just an outstanding representative for downtown, and we are very pleased to have him. I think a couple interesting statistics that we found recently in a market study that we completed that downtown is 740 acres in size. And if you wanted to compare that to our, our friends in Lawrence to the east, that's seven times larger than their downtown. 24% of the city's jobs are located in downtown, which represents only 2% of the, the land area. And there are 60% of all the office space located in downtown. So it's an area of significance and certainly importance to the community. We, um, obviously, in the past years have done a lot of events downtown. Due to the pandemic, we were not able to do nearly as many this year, but we were able to have our Brown Dag concerts on Wednesdays. We had Cruisin' the Capital Car Show. Movies on the Plaza, which we usually did at the Capitol, but have moved to the Evergy Plaza. And then Saturday, we were able to have the Reverse Miracle on Kansas Avenue Parade, which we were very pleased to continue that tradition. One of the things that we did this year, the city was not able to fund the plantings on the corners of all of the blocks in the, on Kansas Avenue. So we, along with the Downtown Topeka Foundation, incurred that expense and Shendel Lawn and Landscape planted all of the 16-quarter landscape beds, which I think looks great, rather than just having them empty and, and full of mulch. We also spent a lot of time with our merchants to see how we could help them through the pandemic. And the top need that they expressed to us was promotion and, and getting the word out that they were safe and welcoming people downtown. So the BID shared in the expense of a TV campaign that is ongoing through January, telling that story and inviting people downtown. I want to share with you the fact that we are working closely with Bill Feinder and the Planning Department on a new master plan for downtown. The last one was done in the year 2000, and we're excited at the prospect for the future. A market study that we just completed shows that we have tremendous potential for the growth of downtown, including another 900 residential units, several hundred thousand square feet of office space, another 300,000 potential square feet of retail, and up to 200 to 300 additional rooms for hotels. So Bill and his staff are getting close to finalizing that and should have a final master plan very soon. As I said, a lot of our events, unfortunately, we could not hold this year, but we were pleased to be able to, to hold the ones that we did that I mentioned. So I, I think the main thing here that you're interested in, the advisory board has met and has offered this funding plan for next year. We submitted our budget back in March as well as the, the program of service. The advisory board is not suggesting any changes in the assessment rate. As you can see there on the right, that is the BID map. We have two tiers. Tier one is assessed at a little higher level than tier two. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have regarding anything to do with the BID.
Anybody have any questions for Vince? Mike? Councilman Lesser?
Vince, just a quick question for some information, if I could get you to get it to me when you get an opportunity in the next couple of weeks or so. No big hurry. Obviously, another portion of it is the, the amount that we charge on the vacant structures. Could you get me a list of the vacant structures that we have in that area and the amount of time they've been vacant?
I believe I can. I'll do my best to get that to you.
Perfect.
Additional comments or questions for Vince? Okay, see no additional comments or questions. What is the pleasure of the body? Mike, Councilman Lesser?
Michelle, our mayor, motion to approve.
Councilwoman Hiller seconds. And I do prefer to just be called Michelle. The mayor's the title. Any additional comments or questions? This one is not a public hearing, so we could go straight to the vote if there's none. All right, we proceed by voting.
Mayor Dala Eastla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Aqua?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have 10 yes, motion carries.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Frye.
I am, this will be the last time I get a chance to go before the council since I'm retiring at the end of this month. I just wanted to thank you for all you've done for downtown, for DTI, and for me personally. I think what we've displayed over the last eight years is a great example of the public and private sectors working together for the betterment of our community. Couldn't have been done without you, and I want to thank all of you for what you've done and the staff. I really appreciate it.
Hey Vince, we appreciate you. When, um, when we were in the process, so just a little history and nostalgia here, when we were in the process of trying to figure out who was going to be the right person to lead, and it was announced that the successful candidate was Vince Frye, there was not a question in our community that Vince was going to be the person that was going to reunify our downtown businesses, because there was a lot of concern, because we were in the process of new construction. And we, we were in flux of new businesses coming in and other businesses going out, feeling like our downtown group did not have enough representation. Vince was the quintessential image of the man walking the street, building relationships, treating people as humans, and reminding them of the value that they bring to our community. Vince, your leadership in Downtown Incorporated has been able to transition our downtown from a downtown that, you know, had a lot of work that had promise, to a downtown that before COVID was shining. And we have so many of the things that we were dreaming of, and none of those things would have been able to be possible had it not been by your leadership. Your community is indebted to you and to your work, not just as a downtown chair, but the man that ran Fry Allen and has done so much to uplift the, the name of the city of Topeka. So Vince, thank you for your service. We are excited. Darianne is going to be in this new role. And the beautiful thing is that you are such a Topekan that we know that you're never leaving. You're just going to be hanging around, doing other fun things in our community. So Vince, thank you. From the bottom of our heart, we appreciate you.
Mayor, thank you. I appreciate that. And, and I also want to make sure that you all are aware that Rhiannon Friedman, who is on camera now, is going to be the president of Downtown Topeka. In fact, she currently is. And she'll do a great job in my absence, and I can't be more excited for the future of downtown.
Thank you, Vince. Okay. Mike, you have, Councilman Lesser, you have something else that you wanted. I'm just so excited to see you feeling better that I'm just seeing you as my friend and not here on the council. So Councilman Lesser, you also raised your hand.
I don't have much to add. You, you summed it up. Vince, man, I, you know, drive down Kansas Avenue, if you didn't, you know, 10 years ago, and drive down it now, and, and what a wonderful job. And, and thank you. Like, we're gonna see, I know, I know you're not gonna, 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 gonna get out of here, so we'll, we'll have more projects for you. But if you want to dump that project that I asked you for to Rihanna, then that would probably be a good move on your part.
Good start, yeah.
Oh, gosh. All right. So we move on to the next item, if the clerk could read. Thank you.
He is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, granting a petition for a Community Improvement District CID for the Downtown Ramada Hotel and Convention Center, establishing the CID and levying a CID sales tax of 2% within the district.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, the city staff and I have presented information regarding this creation of the Community Improvement District. Also, you heard from the developer regarding this project last week. So really, we're here to answer questions that you may have. Staff and I recommend approval of this ordinance to create the Community Improvement District for Ramada Hotel and Convention Center property, and we stand for questions.
Questions for City Manager, or I see that Mr. Parrish is also here?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would move approval.
Do we have a second? We have a second by Councilwoman Nager. Additional comments or questions on this item? Councilman Duncan?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to briefly say, I'm, I'm gonna vote in support of this this evening. I'm sure some people read my comments and concerns with the CID process that were in the newspaper, and I mentioned most of those at the meeting last week. One thing that was left out of that article was that, and I reiterate to people, is I don't have any issue with anyone who currently has a CID, and I don't have an issue with Mr. Parrish coming to us and asking for it. He followed the process, they did everything that was asked of us, and they meet the criteria. And there's certainly positives to this CID. And the truth is, this is one that majority of non-Topekins will pay it, right? I mean, that's, that's, there's a part to that also. So I'm okay supporting this this evening. I just will reiterate before that I hope moving forward, my only concerns are not with, with getting rid of the CID itself, but just tightening it up a little, and with a decade now behind us of, of this incentive that we've, we've done, I think we can make some tweaks that kind of benefit everybody a little bit better moving forward. And I know in talks with staff that that's gonna happen, so I appreciate that. And we'll have those conversations later, but I just wanted to take a moment to say that this evening, so thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Do you have a motion and a second? Seeing none, we proceed by voting.
Mayor Dala Eastla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Aqua?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have 10 yes, the motion carries.
All right, we now move on to our next item, if the clerk would read.
He has a resolution introduced by City Manager Brent Trout relating to the city of Topeka's legislative agenda for the 2021 legislative session.
City Manager? Or we go straight to Whitney then?
Yes, Whitney is here. We went through and we made the adjustments to the priorities to include the abandoned housing priority, and that was added. And I think that it reflects what was discussed at the previous meeting. And so we ask for your approval of these priorities tonight. Whitney is here and available to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Mr. Damron or for City Manager with regards to this item? For those of you who are just tuning in, this is a discussion that we had mostly last week to discuss those items. This week is pretty much ratifying those priorities. Deputy Mayor?
No question, Mayor, but I, I do appreciate the changes that they made, especially to put in the, uh, the housing, the blighted housing item, and with that, I'll move approval.
Do we have a second? Councilwoman Ortiz seconds? Additional comments or questions on this item? Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I too appreciate putting that change in there for us. We struggle with that. I was talking with another council member today. I've been on both sides of that. I've said, let the state do it. I've said, let the city do it. So we just need to figure it out because it's a big problem, and I appreciate that change. I, I do have a question for Whitney. I heard on the news today that they said that legislators would probably go check in, be there for like a day or so, and then not come back for a while. So if that happens, I hope that he would, um, I didn't know if he heard anything like that, and I hope if, if that does happen, that he would, he would inform us of letting us. and I hope if, if that does happen, that he would, he would inform us of letting us know. Because I do have some stuff I'd like to send to some of, some of our legislators. But I didn't know if he heard anything like that as well.
Mr. Damron?
You know, I think it's still probably open, I had a considerate caucus yesterday and elected new leadership. And I believe through that process, the Legislative Coordinating Council, composed of House and Senate leadership, has indicated they would meet and discuss essentially how to reopen the State House. I know at their most recent meeting, they charged the Director of Legislative Administrative Services to bring back some ideas or proposals on what the protocol should be, what kind of testing procedures should take place. And so I, I don't think that's been firmed up yet, but obviously, House and Senate leadership are concerned about safety, and, and the rumor mill suggests schedules could be changed as far as coming in, maybe starting the budget process, taking a recess for an extended period of time, and then coming back, hopefully after vaccines become more prevalent. But, but I think right now it's still up in the air, but certainly we'll communicate that back to the City Manager.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing that there is no further comment or question, we proceed with the vote.
Get a motion.
We do have a motion. It was seconded by Councilwoman Ortiz. And motion made by Deputy Mayor.
Deputy Mayor. Mayor Dala Isla.
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
Valdivia Akala.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Padilla.
Yes.
Nager.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
And Lesser.
Yes.
We have ten yes, motion carries.
We now move on to the next item, item F. If the clerk would read.
F is approval of the recommended 2021 implementation plan for the adopted citywide housing market study and strategy.
City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Another item that we had a discussion on last week, and we have gone through the implementation plan and answered a number of questions. But tonight, we seek approval of the implementation plan as presented.
Comments or questions from the team? Councilwoman Valdivia Altala.
Thank you, Mayor. Just several comments, reiterating more or less what I said last week. The housing study brought forward findings that I believe are not being addressed in the IP 2021. I, I do believe the IP 2021 that we're looking at is a, is a good start. However, I think that if we view this from a lens of opportunity, an opportunity to seek solutions to ongoing concerns that the study brought forth, such as the historical impact of redlining that still lingers in our city, the need for a living wage, which was brought up a couple of different times in the study, and the continued inequity in African-American and Latino communities in both renting and homeownership. So I think that these are issues, obviously, of economic nature, the economic quality of life as well. I also believe that these ultimately end up being social justice issues. Yet, just as important, with solving these challenges, which take, you know, with taking that forward leap to solve these challenges, is a view to those outside of Topeka, not only inside, but outside of Topeka, and young families that would be coming in to see that the city, our business leaders, community organizations, all stakeholders, even those that are the ones that are suffering most at the hands of lacking inequity, they would be able to see that moving forward and that way of coming to terms with historic issues and see that all Topekins are being able to benefit from that which Topeka has to offer. So I just want to say that since this was not something that was addressed, and with others that I have been talking to, that after the first of the year, I will be asking for those that want to meet, organizations, nonprofits, businesses, also those that are suffering the most from the hands of inequity, to come together to try to find meaningful solutions, not just dialogue, but meaningful solutions. I know that answers do not come overnight and take time, as well as building the collaboration that is needed. I do believe, though, that if we leave this out of what we are seeking to put forth in the coming years, that we will be doing not only the city as a whole, but those lacking in equity a huge disservice. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Additional comments or questions on this item? Councilwoman Hiller.
Mayor, just to piggyback on Councilwoman Valdivia Akala's comments, I was looking, I missed it, I guess, when I saw the agenda come out. The, the, the study had, or the comments had recommended accepting the recommendations of the group rather than adopting. I don't know at this point whether there's a lot of difference, but for those of us that have spent some time in that plan, there's a lot that is still to be developed during the course of 2021. And, and in fact, I too have been working with a neighborhood group, and they'd had a lot of ideas, and some of them are reflected in that, in what was presented to the council, but others, we were assured there would be an opportunity for input throughout the year as those, those plans emerge. For instance, exactly what would be done with the Housing Trust Fund money isn't even worked out yet, and, and will be in the course of the year to set the goals. And there are still a number of metrics that are emerging as well. So just, maybe just for the record, this is a framework of a plan that still will develop in the course of the year and for which we are expecting input from folks. Correct, City Manager?
It, it's the guiding principles that we're going to use for how we move forward for addressing our housing issues in our community. It's where we're starting. Obviously, there, as you mentioned, there are a number of these action steps that are required, various committees. If you look at the implementation plan, it clearly identifies who the, who the stakeholder is that's going to help to move forward. Obviously, staff will be involved with many of these, but there's folks from the private sector and other agencies that work in these areas that are going to be working on it. And so it's a combination of things. It will evolve. There will be decisions made on implementations of plans and efforts. And so all those steps are going to be involved, and they're going to be very public and aware for those that are involved.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to make sure people knew not to just sit back and wait for things to happen, but there are going to be opportunities and a need to participate through this year. Thanks again. Thank you, Mayor.
Additional comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, what is the pleasure of the body? Councilwoman Valdivia Altala.
Move to approve.
We have a motion for approval. We have a second by Councilwoman Padilla. Additional comments or remarks or questions? Seeing none, we proceed by voting.
Mayor Dala Isla.
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
Valdivia Akala.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Padilla.
Yes.
Nager.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
And Lesser.
Yes.
We have ten yes, motion carries.
Motion carries, so we now move on to the next item, item G, if the clerk would read.
G is approval of the 2021-2025 Consolidated Action Plan and fiscal year 2021 Annual Consolidated Action Plan.
City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So one of the things that we decided to wait on was approval of the Consolidated Action Plan based on the efforts that we were going to have in creating the implementation plan. This is an item that we need to approve prior to the end of the year, and so we're bringing it forward tonight for your approval. It's basically a carryover from the items that we have had in the past. This is a five-year plan, and then we do the one-year plans, so in, in, at some point each year. So this is approval of the five-year plan Consolidated Action Plan and the 2021 Consolidated Action Plan, so the fiscal year 2021.
Comments or questions for City Manager? Seeing no comments or questions, what is the pleasure of the body? Councilwoman Ortiz makes a motion for approval. Councilwoman Nager seconded that motion. Do we have any questions? See, Councilwoman Hiller.
I, I presented a proposed amendment last week at the meeting and refreshed that with people today, and I would like to propose an amendment to the mission statements in both plans. You all have a print copy. It is simply a minor adjustment of the statement of mission, which is identical in both plans. To broaden the view just a little bit, investing resources intentionally in LMI neighborhoods to attract collaborative reinvestment, and then instead of talking about just leveraging federal funds in its last bullet, talking about leveraging federal, private, and in-kind resources. I would, I would move that amendment.
Is there a second for the amendment on the language that the councilwoman proposes, Deputy Mayor? Now we have open discussion with regards to the proposal of the language amendment. Seeing that there's no proposal on the language amendment, we then would proceed to vote on the language amendment, and then we would vote on the amended document. Okay, we proceed by voting.
Mayor Dala Isla.
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
Valdivia Akala.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Padilla.
Yes.
Nager.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
And Lesser.
Yes.
We have ten yes, motion carries.
The motion carries, so now we have the item amended. We had a motion and a second for the approval of the item. At this point in time, do we have the, any questions with regards to the amended document? Seeing none, we proceed with the vote.
Mayor Dala Isla.
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
Valdivia Akala.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Padilla.
Yes.
Nager.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Lesser.
Yes.
Ten yes, motion carries.
All right, we now move on to item H, if the clerk would read.
H is a resolution introduced by City Manager Brent Trout describing the area to be considered priority for 2021 planning target area for future federal and city funding as may be allocated within the 2022-2023 city budgets.
City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The, Latoya Burnett presented at the last meeting the recommendation of the CAC on the selection of Valley Park in IA to receive the funding and the planning help and support related to this 2021 target area selection. So staff is available for questions if there are any regarding this recommendation.
Questions for the staff? Seeing no question, what is the pleasure of the body? Councilwoman Nager. She makes a motion. Councilwoman Ortiz seconded that motion. Now learning sign language here. Any questions now that we have a motion and a second? Seeing none, we proceed by voting.
Mayor Dala Isla.
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
Valdivia Akala.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Padilla.
Yes.
Nager.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
And Lesser.
Yes.
We have ten yes, motion carries.
We now move on to the next item, if the clerk would read.
I is a selection and approval of a specific funding mechanism to incorporate into a license and management agreement with the Friends of Topeka Zoo Arts to manage the Topeka Zoo and Conservation Center pursuant to public-private partnership.
City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, as you know, the city and the Friends of the Zoo, Friends of the Topeka Zoo have been working hard and diligently related to this particular issue for many months. A memo was provided today that basically summarizes the financial components of the licensing and management agreement that the city and Friends of the Topeka Zoo are considering. We really have three main questions that we're searching for answers tonight in order to be able to move forward with the finalizing of the agreement. The three questions basically center around yes or no. Does the Friends of the Zoo and City of Topeka want to enter into a management agreement, and is that the best option for the city? Number two, determine the method of financing, the capital maintenance costs that's been identified at the zoo. And number three, the method to fund the operating budget shortfall that we experienced in 2021. So I'd like to walk through those and get input, and then hopefully a motion on each of these as we go forward tonight in order to be able to continue to move this project along. So the first one is the very fundamental question that we're asking, which is, do you agree with pursuing a public-private partnership with Friends of the Zoo related to the management of the zoo as the appropriate route to take moving forward? And so I guess that's where I would throw out and then seek input and, and/or a motion from the governing body as to if they would like to continue to move forward with this public-private partnership as being the best solution for continued management of the zoo.
I don't know if we possibly lost the mayor, so I think we might have. Councilwoman Lesser, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to direct City Manager to enter into a management agreement to have the Friends of the Topeka Zoo manage the Topeka Zoo.
Okay, there's been a motion, and sorry, let me, on the side of the screen, let me, let me pull up everybody so I can see. Okay, and I see Councilwoman Ortiz is seconding that motion. And, sorry, I know the mayor, I'm sure, would like to be here for this discussion. Well, I'm not seeing her back up here. Hold on one second. Forgive me for mayor. Oh, okay, the mayor is trying to get back in. Are you trying to?
Councilmember Lesser.
Yes.
Would you mind?
No, no problem, no problem.
Sorry, Deputy Mayor.
No problem, no problem, go ahead.
Would you consider maybe rephrasing the, the motion? Because we really don't have a management agreement ready for approval. Do you just mean anticipating the public-private partnership and moving forward with an agreement when one is ready? Basically, that's what you're saying.
That was the intent of my motion, was to advise the City Manager to proceed with pursuing.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You bet.
And the mayor would like us to go ahead and proceed while she gets, she gets sent back to go in. So any other comments or questions? Councilwoman Hiller, go ahead.
I just want to clarify, I think we- I just want to clarify. I think we've all kind of indicated all the way along that we were interested in seeing this proceed, but it does, and certainly I'm one of them, but the issues of getting the dollars worked out could make a difference in us moving it forward out of today, and I'm wondering if that should be the last motion today rather than the first one, but whatever works best.
I think from my standpoint, I think that there has been statements about continuing and so forth, but this is really a little more definitive in that we're being asked to actually enter into an agreement. And then the next two items will actually frame that as far as how we're handling some of those financial pieces so that we know as we enter into the agreement how they'll be handled. And so it's really, this is it. We want to do this as a body. You want to move forward with hiring the zoo. Friends of the Topeka Zoo run the zoo. And then the next steps are clarifying the parameters that we're going to use as we finalize that document. So I guess it's really going back to this is definitive in that this is the method that we want to see or how we want to see our zoo managed in the future is with thoughts.
Other questions? Yes.
Would you mind, okay, Councilmember Hiller, I just wanted to let you know too that this will not come to fruition, obviously, until an agreement is signed. So this is, as the City Manager said, providing staff with kind of a framework to work under. Definitely, we do want to pursue the PPP. The next items that he'll be asking you about are, you know, if that's the case, how are we going to fund capital maintenance? And if that's the case, how are we going to fund operating gaps in funding? And once we have that, then we can take it and move forward. Because if if there's no support at this point in time, then it really kind of all stops there, right?
Other questions? Councilman Dobler.
So if I understand the motion correctly, this just asks the City Manager to move ahead with developing the contract, I guess, the license agreement. That will come back in front of the City Council, is that correct?
Absolutely, yes, Councilmember Dobler.
Thank you.
Okay, apparently while I was booted out, there was a motion and a second. Because we're talking about the approval of this motion, and the motion would allow, like the Councilman Dobler indicated, the City Manager, the ability to start looking at what that contract would look like to be brought back to the City Council so that we could enter into a final agreement with the Topeka Zoo and FOTS. If there's no other questions, we proceed with the vote.
Mayor DeLausla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
No.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have nine yes, or Ms. Valdivia Akala voting no, the motion carries.
Okay.
So as we go into the second item, the second item deals with the method of finance to cover the capital maintenance costs. In the discussions that Jessica and Lisa had with a number of governing body members, there seemed to be that there was support related to that be covered by the issuance of bonds. That you take a 15-year expected timeframe and that it would go, it would be a total of 5.7 million, and we basically set up a capital maintenance fund that would be drawn on by the Friends of the Topeka Zoo for projects that they do in order to maintain our buildings and so forth out at the zoo. So for me, I think to simplistically look at it, I think the motion would be to support the issuance of bonds to cover the capital maintenance costs at an amount of $380,000 per year. And that that's basically for a total of 5.7 million that would be issued at the time the city issues their normal financing. Now, that might be a little complex, but and Lisa, I don't know if there's something you want to do much simpler, but that's basically the intent is seeking the approval of the governing body, the creation of a capital maintenance fund by the selling of bonds for that purpose.
Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Attorney.
That's basically right. It's directing you to pursue that option for funding the capital maintenance piece, which is 5.7 million dollar bond issuance over the 15-year life of the agreement.
Councilman Dobler.
Just to clarify, is that a one-time issuance of 5.7 million, or is that 380,000 every year?
The intent would be that it would be a one-time issuance of 5.7 million. And then we would work through, they would make requests for projects to be done, and we would approve them and then issue the funding for that project out of the 5.7 million that was approved.
I guess, does that meet the intent of our capital funding? I mean, we're essentially borrowing 5.7 million day one, and the last $380,000 doesn't get paid out till year 15? Is that that correct?
Councilman Dobler, excuse me. I asked Jessica to help answer that. She's been working on that issue. Jessica?
Sure. In essence, Councilman Dobler, that could be the case. We have, we would likely issue this in a taxable bond deal, so the timing of it in terms of tax regulation would be less important. Jeff White is also available for more specific bond questions. I think the idea of the 5.7 million would also give FOTS the ability to address capital maintenance needs, maybe in a more timely fashion. So if they did have a year that required more significant investment that would yield operating savings or safety improvements, that they would be able to draw on that more quickly.
Follow up if I could, Mayor.
Please do, because you're probably going to ask the same things that I will, so please proceed.
How much more interest are we going to pay borrowing 5.7 day one than, say, 400,000 a year in round numbers?
Sure. I don't have the specific, Jeff, if you're on, if you could respond.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, Jeff White with Columbia Capital. So Councilmember Dobler, it really depends on what your expectation of forward interest rates is. So what I can tell you today is that taxable municipal rates are hovering just north of historical lows. So presuming that persists into early next year, we would be able to take advantage of very compelling long-term borrowing rates. Also, a single transaction versus multiple ones reduces transaction costs and those types of things. So, you know, certainly the the council could choose to include this in its annual general obligation bond issue rather than doing one time upfront. That's certainly another option that would work. As the information that staffs provided you along the way indicated, and as Jessica just noted, this does have the added benefits of allowing us to have a little lumpier schedule than exactly $380,000 a year, which is a little probably closer to reality than assuming every year is going to be exactly 380 on the nose. And also, I think, shows a level of commitment to the project. You may recall, if you got this far in a memo two or three weeks back that I provided, that kind of outlined details on the financial models that you looked at, the very last page there showed our analysis of the city's current outstanding general obligation debt, the current debt service levy for the city's general bond and interest fund, and the city's anticipated capital program over the next few years, including the pretty significant investment in Polk Quincy viaduct. And our expectation is that the city does have the capacity to include this 5.7 upfront borrowing in its capital program next year without creating any sort of challenges for future year funding of that program.
Thank you. Just two follow-up questions. One, is lumpier a financial term that I'm not aware of? Thank you. Secondly, no arbitrage issues with?
No, when we, the reason we're suggesting a taxable transaction is that that causes the tax lawyers to go back in their holes and not ask questions about how long it's going to take us to spend the proceeds.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you very much.
Also, actually, before I, Jeff, quick question. Is it cheaper for us because money is so cheap right now to borrow now? And then the second question is, I know the answer to this, but this, making this borrowing, borrowing this amount will not have us hit our cap that we have in bonding. Will it impact our bonding ability?
So to answer those backwards, no, it won't. There's no impact on your statutory borrowing authority, and we would not expect that that level of additional debt would have any sort of impact on your bond rating. The council has kind of imposed on itself a target. So this would exceed your normal target of 9 million a year, and I know that that target actually will be exceeded anyways a little bit over the next couple of years, particularly with Polk Quincy. So this would be on top of that. But again, we've looked at, and if you look at that pretty chart my colleague Caitlin Dwyer put together at the back of the memo, we've assumed after this period of additional issuance over the next couple of years, that the city goes back to its normal $9 million pattern. And the city has ample capacity within the existing levy, presuming AV, it doesn't drop dramatically. And even if that were to occur, we can make adjustments along the way because the city's in the market every year. Sorry, going back to your first question. Again, taxable debt is, all things equal, more expensive than tax-exempt debt. Today, that differential is pretty small. We're in an era of very tight compression. In fact, that dynamic has led to 2020 being the highest year of taxable municipal issuance on record. So the question about whether this is more or less expensive today than in the future depends largely on the direction of interest rates. All I can tell you is we're pretty near historic lows. We hit those historic lows literally the week before the world imploded in March. We're not too far away from those. I certainly, I joke with folks that my Magic 8-Ball is, or my crystal ball is black and white and answers yes and no questions only. So the, you know, what interest rates will be in the future, I can't tell you. I can just tell you that that at least compared to history, we'd be entering into the market at a very strong time.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. In the course of the conversations that I was involved with, we talked about another approach to this, and I would like to see what maybe is not mentioned as a first choice, so I just want to run it by. In the packet that we got today at four o'clock, which I won't claim a real, but I tried to get it quickly. There is a calculation that shows that if we borrowed 5.7 million, I guess sometime soon, at whatever the low interest rates are, that our annual debt service audit would be 431.99. And so that's roughly 52,000 a year more than the 380,000 that we would be offering the zoo, if I'm reading that correctly. So to do that simple math, I'm kind of off to the side, that would be an extra cost to the city of $780,000 over the course of the 15 years to finance that 5.7 million. When I was in my visit about it, the idea was, well, maybe we could kind of save money and stipulize by having that that fund bonding it. Yet, at the same time, I'm looking at, if we're going to give them 380,000 a year anyway, why don't we just give them, figure out how to work it internally in our budget, and give them 380,000 a year and save that 52,000. Also, in the, I brought up the concept of how to disperse it. I really had felt that one of the beauties of giving the giving them some money and saying it's all yours, you manage it, was that we would not be involved in their capital expenses anymore, that they're, in my view, or my vision, is that they're totally responsible. They know how much money they're going to get from us every year. They they have a responsibility to do their operating planning and capital planning, and they figure out how to best spend that money, and whether they want to do their improvements or their major maintenance things with cash or with funding themselves, not involving us at all. That there, if what we're doing is giving them the zoo effect, so that they can begin starting their future management of it from day one. Me, giving them, telling them that for capital maintenance purposes, they're going to get 380,000 a year, and that we set our monitoring of that by what is in that contract that says we want to make sure that you are doing excellent physical management, excellent personnel management, excellent animal and civic management, excellent customer service, and that you're keeping up what you've decided you could afford. And if you grow, you're going to have to take care of whatever the maintenance expenses are, period. We're going to watch how it's going. We're not going to be in the middle of it. And so to me, if we're going to help with capital maintenance at all, to simply give them X amount of money a year and stay out of the way. Me, if we're going to, back to just the capital projects, if we're giving it to them to manage and grow and make major decisions on, I don't want us, my vision is that we would not be in the middle of that decision-making. We would just be getting reports from them. So therefore, they know they've got 380,000 a year coming if based on this budget, and they figure out how they want to finance things and how to do it. So is there some, I know that was talked about in my one-on-one, is there some reason that people think that is not a viable option, or could you address it?
So I'll try to address some of the questions in the memo and in the meetings that we had with the various councilmembers. We did discuss more than just this option. We discussed the option of including it in the city's operating budget, which would require either a corresponding revenue enhancement or corresponding expenditure reduction. We discussed issuing $380,000 on an annual basis to meet this requirement, and we also discussed this one-time debt issuance to fund the life of the agreement. So the reason that the City Manager is focusing on that one today, as is the memo, is that the overwhelming feedback we received from those City Council meetings was a support for this approach. In terms of the ability to borrow and then just release the money, unfortunately, there's various regulations surrounding that, and I'm sure Jeff will be more than happy to jump in if you want particulars on it. But ultimately, the city is still responsible for that debt, so we will have to repay the debt. But we also are responsible to ensure that bond proceeds are used in a way that's consistent with the ultimate approval of those bonds. From the outset, the city and FOTS would agree to what those funds can be used for. Now, whether that is in the list of projects that they've submitted to you that they believe make up that $380,000 annually, or we could also commit to or agree to a similar document that we have for our own debt policy on what debt proceeds are expected to be used for. So if we borrowed that and FOTS requested use of whatever funding, really, the city is going to make sure that it's consistent with the agreement and would then release the funds. But I, the city needs to be involved because it is ultimately our responsibility. And then with your depiction of the interest costs, that is accurate. In the beginning of the amortization schedule, the city will pay more interest. But if you look at the out years, that does trail off, which is, you know, similar to a standard amortization schedule.
And to clarify related to that, we still would continue to carry and pay down, it's not in any of these documents, but we would carry and pay down the debt that we already have for the zoo.
Correct.
Well, I obviously the if there are limitations on how the money gets managed because it's bonded. I realize that there is issues with the levies, but it would I'd still be inclined to just give them the money and figure out how to do that without all the constrictions and the staff involvement and so on that that the bonding would require. Thank you.
Additional comments or deputy mayor? Actually, Councilman Lester was waiting to be followed by the deputy mayor.
Do it. Do ahead, Tony.
Okay. Yeah, and, uh, Ms. Lamondola, and I was one of those that when you spoke to the other day. Initially, I was, um, I was supportive of that. However, at that point, I didn't realize the bond, the principal payments would be more than that three eighty a year. And I guess it's hard for me to make a a tell intelligent decision without seeing maybe what the what the amortization is on that. You know, if it's if it's in year thirteen, when it when it, um, when it flips, that's a little tougher sell to me than if it's year three or something. Is that something I guess you could provide to us? I mean, I I don't. I mean, I guess I could plug in a bunch of things in it, try to figure out an amortization that meets these numbers. But I was also a little puzzled that in twenty twenty one, it shows a lower amount in bond and principal than than in twenty twenty two. Maybe that's because the timing, it wouldn't be a full year of payments, perhaps. I I don't know.
For your first question, um, in the memo that, uh, Columbia Capital provided, um, a few weeks ago on page five of that, um, of that memo, it it discusses the the debt piece of all the overall, uh, the question. And so, um, essentially, the on that page, it shows the twenty twenty one bond bond issuance and then shows the Polk Quincy, the general, um, issuance, and then also the zoo project issuance. And so the calculation you see on my memo today is just a percentage of that overall sale. Um, and then I allocated or applied that percentage to the annual debt issuance. Um, so I I'm I can get you that that calculation broken out. But you can the you can you can start to see that the interest decline. If you look on that that one page, but we will get that to you. We'll break it out. It's obviously a projection. Jeff, I see you're taking yourself off mute if it's okay with the mayor.
Yeah, so historically, the city has funded zoo capital via its bond program. And so the interest cost has also obviously been funded out of the the levy and other revenues that runs to that general bond and interest fund. So yes, borrowing is not free. But paying cash for this out of the general fund is a is it a net new cost to the general fund that hasn't existed in the past? So certainly, using cash gives the gives FOTS more flexibility. It does alleviate staff needs, uh, to review spending to make sure that that it qualifies under state law for bond expenditure. The challenge again, and and we haven't talked about, uh, operating costs yet, is it it would be a net new cost to the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
So help me understand this, is the if we borrow money, it's general fi- or geo bonding, is that correct?
Yes.
So the debt, the additional debt service due to that geo bonding is not new? It's not a new expense to the general fund?
The debt service would be funded out of the the bond and interest fund. If we issue debt, if we were to take on that expense as part of our operating, we would, we would fund that out of the general fund. So the bond and interest fund has to be used to pay down bond and interest or related debt.
What's the revenue source for the bond and interest fund every year?
The property tax levy, along with a variety of other sources.
Okay. I guess I'm asking the question, what it's it's not free money if you bond it, correct?
Correct.
It is not free money if you bond it.
If you bond something, it's it's a new expense to the general fund regardless of what fund it comes from, correct?
It would be, yes, to answer your question, um, yes, it would be new. Historically, we have funded that with our annual bond issuance. So I think that the thought is that it would be if we decided to fund it in that way, again, it would be similar to how we've, um, addressed capital maintenance issues at the zoo.
Maybe this is a long term discussion, but pretending like there's a bucket of money that if you sell bonds that that it doesn't cost us anything is. I I don't agree with that. Regardless, I think what my point is, it really boils down to the city's confidence in FOTS to run the zoo and run it effectively. And our ability to give them enough funding to do that. Is that correct? I mean, let's forget about whether we're paying cash or bonding. It's all coming from the side. The taxpayers of Topeka are going to pay for it either way. Is that correct?
It is.
So again, it boils down to our ability to give FOTS the funding to do a really good job of running the zoo. And we're going to ask them to do that under this management agreement. Is that correct, Mr. City Manager?
That's correct. And I think one of the things that we're we need to look at is there are two portions that are we're going to two different funds is the way we look at it. There's the funding that comes from our tax levy that is dedicated to the payment of bonds and our tax levy that's we use in our general fund. And in this particular case, the capital maintenance part is coming from the tax levy that pays for our bonding and then the other for the general fund. And so that's that's the way we look at it when we're doing the accounting of it. So you're right, it is all city money. It's just a matter of I can't pay the management fee that goes to them with general fund money. But I can fund the capital projects with the capital levy that we pass. And so that's why it it's that's how we're we're phrasing it and setting it up.
I I get that, but the reality is a buck is a buck. A taxpayer buck is a taxpayer buck. Is that correct?
Correct.
They don't care what fund it goes in. So I'm fully supportive of this. I'm supportive of bonding upfront to provide them the funds to do what they need to do. Let's just call it what it is. It's 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 all the same bucket. We're we're going to pay more money to show our support for this arrangement by bonding five point seven million dollars day one. Is that correct?
Yes, that's accurate.
Okay. I support that. I just want to be clear about that. Uh, one, one more thing. I'll I'll call the Duncan amendment here and and ask three questions for the price of one. I I just want to be clear in the agreement that that the five point seven covers fifteen years. Because the FOTS of twenty twenty is probably not the FOTS of twenty thirty. And if everything gets spent in the first five years. I mean, I guess I can come back to the city council at any point in time and ask for more money. But, uh, it should be clear that if if this bucket is called capital expenses, annual capital expenses, or whatever it was, that that's three hundred and eighty thousand dollars each year for fifteen years. Doesn't mean they have, they can only spend that much if they need to move juggle that around among, uh, years to get to to properly maintain the zoo. That's fine, but I I certainly hope we don't see a request in year four or five for another two or three million bucks. And I'm sure the the folks that represent FOTS right now don't intend to do that. But I'd like to see some language in the agreement that covers that. And I'll stop. Thank you.
Councilman Lester.
Thank you, Mayor. I I I I'm just thinking, um, hey, what where are we at right now in our reserves? What's our reserve come out, uh, balance right now roughly?
Uh, in the general fund? I want to say twenty one million as of the end of twenty nineteen.
It it I I'm just, I'm just thinking of different options. Have have we given any consideration of doing both possibly, possibly? You know, it would be structured as such in the in the agreement, but I could see there being a safe, being a safe, there would there would be a savings as well as i- if we if we bonded the first seven, six or seven years. And then at the same time, allocated the half of half of that amount, which would have been about, if we did it half and half, it'd be about two point six. And took two point six, uh, out of reserves earmarked it drawing interest for the purpose of of this project. Then at the end of the bonded period, then they would have the cash plus the interest on that to move forward, which would then offset part of the the fee and interest if we were to go fifteen years out on it. Are you tracking with me?
Madam Mayor, if my one, one note is
Please.
Well, we can, well, we can finance capital with bond proceeds in Kansas. We can't do working capital.
I'm not following you.
So we can, we could certainly finance ph- physical capital. I just want to make sure I'm I'm not misunderstanding. We can finance capital improvements with bond proceeds, but not working cash. And maybe I'm, maybe I'm not.
No, I I mean, simply, simply, I mean, I'm going to simplify this. I'm basically saying it's five, five point three million. I'm saying we bond for the first seven years, two point six million. And at the same time, we entered this agreement, we take two point six and put in an account drawn interest that just sits there for him for the second, the second half of it is is simply what I'm putting saying out of reserves.
Um, that's certainly an option that the governing body could go with, um, best practices, uh, on use of one time revenue to support ongoing expenses. You know, that would be inconsistent, I guess, with best practices. But that's certainly an option that the governing body could choose to do. In terms of earning interest on the cash portion of it, uh, in the short term, interest rates are not obviously yielding as much as we would like on our savings. But yeah, certainly, that that is an option.
What are they yielding versus what we're paying?
Jeff?
Yeah, so our portfolio returns are, you know, we a- as in most states, we're limited to treasuries, agencies and in CDs in most cases. So our portfolio yield is sinking like a stone with with where short term rates are. So, you know, under a half percentage point, um, and probably less for the for the shortest portfolios. Borrowing rates as low as they are still, uh, you know, probably a full percentage point or more higher than that.
The also, the governing body could decide to approve a bond issuance of half the amount and revisit, you know, the remaining half in future years. That's also an option.
Councilman Lester, do you feel like your question has been answered?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor to be followed by Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I guess the question I would have is, um, kind of going back to what Councilman Dover said is, does the zoo have need for more money upfront right now? You know, a very lumpy distribution, I guess, to use Mr. White's terminology. Or is it, uh, or 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 half of that amount right now be be sufficient? Does anyone know?
I believe, um, FOTS is.
Yeah, we have three individuals signed up for public comment for FOTS. If any one of them would like to answer this question. The FOTS team, I see Dina Cox is here. Oh, there is Representative Patton.
How are you all? Um, so I don't have that information in front of me. I wish I did, but I I do believe, uh, Councilman Emerson that we actually think the capital maintenance needs are greater than the three hundred and eighty thousand that that we put in the agreement. But we think we can do it cheaper and we can get items donated and that type of stuff. So I don't think we could do it for less than that in the in the early years. I mean, certainly, there's always things, and you guys know you do this with with your own items, that you postpone some things. I mean, maybe there is some sidewalk that's not cracked quite as much as it needs to be replaced yet, but certainly, that would be difficult to do, I think.
It was, if I could ask you a follow up, Representative Patton. Will it will this actually have, will it hurt you if you have this pot of money? If, you know, if somebody is getting ready to ride a, uh, you know, you know, you say the Bob Fletcher Foundation, Family Foundation, they're one to donate a million bucks, but they know you have a five point seven million. Will it actually conversely actually hurt you to have this money sitting there, you think?
That's that's a good point. I mean, I I would hope we could make the case that, again, that this has been allocated over fifteen years and we can't spend it all upfront. And we have to get donations to, you know, offset some of that. But I I could see someone make that argument.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Somebody's cats out there. Along the lines of, I I like what Councilman Lesser was suggesting, and, um, I don't have the numbers to go with it. But if we, uh, we are over our minimum balance in the reserves, if we were to, uh, create a fund from which, so we had the money parked. And and use that to to make my suggestion of the annual contribution. Maybe it would be a win win. I recall as people were talking that one of, when I had my visit, one of the reasons I really liked the three hundred and eighty thousand annually for maintenance is again, um, we're, if we're spinning it off to FOTS, let them figure out how they're going to do it. And if they're going to borrow money, or if they need to do something in big spurts, let them make that decision. But correspondingly, because we're spinning it off theoretically, at the end of fifteen years, we're not going to do it. If if what they know is we've got three hundred and eighty thousand a year, every year. And then at the end, we got to make up three hundred and eighty thousand a year at the level that we're operating the zoo right now. So that what we've offered them is something that is consistent that they can build their business on. They can count on it for fifteen years, but progressively, they know they have to make it up because they're going to have to do it on their own. As far as I'm concerned, it should be full speed ahead for them in terms of getting donations of of in kind go. People talked about accounting services or whatever they can get donated cages for bears or whatever it is or money. And as far as I'm concerned, if they do really well at that, our three hundred and eighty thousand isn't going to look like that much money. And if they accumulate multi million dollar reserves by the end of that fifteen years, because they have been able to plan and manage their exhibits and their money well and their attendance is way up, I'm fine with that. And I don't want anybody to have to be in the middle of reconsidering it either. But to me, that steady amount of money with the, if we sandwich it with operating money and maintenance money. If it's steady and they know that's what they have to make up, or at least the three eighty, that that provides a rhythm that's easier to manage from. We know that we have a really capable board right now and that they're wanting to set some good practices in place. And to me, that and and Fred, I'm open to feedback on that. I know we've talked about that privately a little bit. And it's a, it's a better way to hand them some support and let them let them fly with it because then they don't have to talk to us about anything except whether everything's going fine. But but if what if what we need is is the whatever fifteen years, you know, five point seven million, I guess, but we just, we agreed, we're going to give it out three hundred and eighty thousand a year. A corresponding question to that for City Manager and Jessica that I hadn't thought of before is the three hundred and eighty thousand we've been spending before was part of our nine million dollar cap. Correct? I mean, it it wobbled back and forth, but that's an average that people have calculated. If we do this for them, would we, like, let's say we were going to bond it every year, would we limit ourselves then as the city to eight? Eight point seven, eight point six two million? 8.7, 8.62 million? So that we did not exceed the bond limit that we've set for ourselves?
I hadn't actually even considered that. I mean, I think our needs are great. And that we would probably, my intent would be is we would ask for the nine million with this setup, the way we have planned. Um, so, but had not gotten into a discussion. Um, obviously, like I said, our needs are great and there would probably be a use for that additional at keeping it at the nine million for the various street projects, et cetera, that we've been considering.
Well, along the lines of what Councilman Dobler said, if we're not going to take it off our spending cap, then what we're proposing to do is, is borrow and spend more than we were before, and that's all extra money. Just, just so we realize that.
Yes, you're right. It would be additional money and that would be an understanding and would be part of the discussion we would have as we enter into the 2022 budget discussion.
But it would not be a trade-off. It, it would be extra.
Well, it, it, it potentially could be, but it also could be decided that the governing body does not want it to be a trade. Um, that it would not be an additional, and then you could lower that amount, as you mentioned. Um, that is definitely your prerogative as it comes to establishing that, um, that guideline that you have right now at nine million would be reduced the appropriate amount to what we're providing to the, to the zoo could be done.
I think we need to keep it in mind if that's what we want to do. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I guess my question is, and I don't know if there's been, there has not been a, uh, there's not been a motion on this yet, has there, Mayor? Um.
No, sir. And actually, before the motion, again, wanted to remind everybody that we have three individuals signed up to speak in public comments. Um, I don't know if they still would like to speak. They're the thoughts representatives. I can call on them. Um, but the first one would have been Representative Patton.
Yeah, that, that's fine. Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I don't have anything else to add, except to maybe provide a little bit more information to Councilman Emerson's question. I did find that information. It looks like we have about 700,000, we think, in deferred maintenance right now that needs to be done, which is fairly consistent with about the 600,000 that's been spent every year on capital maintenance. So again, 380 will hopefully be the city share and we can get the rest donated and um, offset by people, you know, doing it for free or close to free as, as we can get. So to answer your question, but that's all I have at this time. Thank you, guys.
Next person signed up was Ms. Dinah Cox.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, I don't have anything to add. I think, uh, Representative Patton has said, you know, put our, our best foot forward and, and giving you the right answers.
Last but not least, Pat Colley.
I do not have anything to add either. Uh, just here for additional questions if needed. Thank you.
Thank you. The only thing that I will say in remark as we are getting close to doing an approval is it seems like there were several options thrown out there. Um, I love our zoo. Our zoo is one of our biggest assets in our community, and I cannot thank, uh, Fox as well as Brendan Wiley enough for the work that they have been doing. But the moment that we start discussing reserves in a time of COVID, in order for us to start talking about the zoo, it causes tremendous pause. Anything that includes our reserve, I will not support because I feel that we are still not out of the woods with regards to this virus. There are small businesses that are suffering in our community. Um, and, and as we're taking a look at different things that we need to be ready for, just in case we have to wait longer, um, as relief comes to our communities. I think that as, as a community leader personally, and, and it's not a, a criticism of, of any, any of the individuals that are working so hard on this project. But using our reserves for anything other than critical things um, and starting a precedent that we want to fund things and we're going to start using our reserves is not a good way to start. Um, so I would not be supporting anything that has anything to do with reserves. Um, so that's all I'll say. And at that point in time, if there's any other questions or comments, Councilman Lesser.
Well, since that's point on basically, uh, one of the things I was talking about was reserves was number one, there hasn't been a time since I've been in here in four years that anybody wants to talk about using our reserves, quite frankly. Um, there's always a reason why we don't. Um, uh, and, and, and secondly, though, is, is I think at some point in time, you can't borrow yourself into prosperity and, and, and we have to look at what is sustainable. And, and I, I do get the COVID. Um, I, I, I get that. I understand that. Um, um, but, but, you know, at, at the same time, I think we have to operate in larger projects like this. Anytime any of us as a business owner want to go get a loan to go do a major project, we got to come up with 20% down at least. Um, uh, to go with, to, 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 to get the financing to fund the project. Um, we don't get too many zero, uh, zero down projects. And I think we have to operate a little bit. If that helps to save some of the money, because, you know, at, at the end of the day, we're spent, at, at the end of the day, we're spending almost a million dollars to spend money that we already have. I mean, at the end of the day. And I don't want that to get lost either. That's all I got.
Deputy Mayor. Now that I have found the mute button and my finger didn't go crazy trying to touch something else.
I saw you looking, Mayor. Thank you. Uh, if I could ask a question of, uh, Councilman Lesser, please. Um, Councilman Lesser, um, your earlier suggestion, was it to borrow half of the amount? Is, is that, was that correct?
I, 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 you know, I'll be, you know, honestly, uh, Tony is, I don't, I, I did not have a firm plan of saying, hey, let's borrow half and let's do this. My question was just along the lines of what we could do to reduce the cost of, of, of borrowing. Because, you know, there again, um, you know, it, it, it's something that, that my dad always told me is, is, you know, if you have the money, then go buy it. If you don't have the money, then wait till you do to go buy it. Obviously, things are different, things have changed. Um, but if you and I want to go buy in our business, we got to come up with 20% down, you know? Um, and, and, and my point is, you know, that's also called commitment, um, to what you're doing and believing in, in what you're doing and risking what you're doing. Um, and, um, you know, there again, uh, you and I've had this conversation. There doesn't ever seem to be any good time to use the reserves, you know, or any portion of the reserves. You know, and, uh, at the end of the day, um, if we can find a way, um, to reduce the cost of borrowing, no different than you or I do in our businesses. That's what we need to look at, at, at doing here, not, not just saying that's 15 years, it's going to zero down, let's spend 700 grand. Let's see how we, there's got to be some type of happy medium in between to accomplish the same thing. No different than Fox has taken a risk, you know? If you look at the, you look at the, uh, it's, you know, uh, Fred was correct. We, we've averaged 600, 800,000 dollars in deferred maintenance every year. We're putting 380,000 dollars in there. They're saying, hey, we're going to find a way to get the rest of this money um, to fund those improvements each year. And we're handing them a bunch of property that has a lot of deferred maintenance in it as well. So, um, there again, that's two pieces. And a long-winded answer to your, your question, but no, I did not exactly am I saying, hey, my proposal is to do this. I'm just saying let's talk about ways that we can do this rather than just borrowing. And if there's some type of happy medium in between that, um, that we can do. Um, I don't want to have it just be too much of a, a, uh, off-the-fresh decision is all I'm saying.
Okay. Thank you for that. First of all, you must have better credit than me. My bank wants usually 50%. But anyway, uh, thank you for that. I guess I'd ask the city manager then. Are you, is the city manager needing a decision from us tonight with the exactly what we want to do here or just? Uh, if, if not, I guess I would ask if staff could give us maybe some options of, you know, and, and give us what the yearly cost would be under a couple of different scenarios.
Well, our intent was a commitment tonight on this, but, um, you know, from the discussion, it seems like we're, you know, we've been looking at the specific um, issues and we need to have this answer in order to move forward with developing the final terms of the agreement. Um, you know, there are certain parts that have been crafted, but there are blanks that have to be filled in. And understanding where this financing source is, um, is important. It has to happen. Um, so, you know, that's part of the reason we looked at the possibility, you know, we threw a couple of scenarios out, which were, um, you know, funding at 380 a year and, or doing the lump sum and some of those projections were provided. And so we sought the input, um, hoping that we could coalesce around an idea uh, that, of how to do that. Um, but it obviously from the discussion we're having tonight, we're not getting that coalesce, coalescing around a certain idea. So I don't know. Um, but it will, it will delay if we're not able to figure out exactly how we want to finance our capital maintenance. And then move on to the item of, of the, uh, the next step, which is the operating shortfall that we're going to have.
Council, uh, Councilman Valeria Alcala and Deputy Mayor, we go back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just in reference to when I heard the word reserves and, and, you know, that conversation. Um, I just want to check, when we cut the 31 positions or so for the city, nothing we, that decision to do that, we didn't utilize the reserves. I mean, those positions were cut, nothing was saved by util, any of those positions, obviously, were not saved by utilizing reserves. Is that correct? City manager?
Well, in the, the, they were cut and that made an impact based on actually what you saw presented tonight at the beginning related to where we're going to end the year because of those reductions in that staffing levels. Um, that we did through this year with cutbacks, and then we saw it into next year's budget by not raising the mill levy and not doing anything in that regard. We made the decision to um, make the reductions that were necessary in order to balance the budget. Um, we did look at the possibility when we provided our scenarios early on with COVID that we might need to use reserves. And if you remember, we looked at different levels of model with low, medium, moderate, or high impact related to what happens. Um, obviously at the point now where we're at, we're, we're looking at more of a low to moderate impact. And so like, you know, where we're looking at right now, we're not going to utilize reserves. Um, based on the projections that we have, but we have made a number of changes within the budget in order to make that to be the case. And I'll let Jessica chime in because there's more detail she's provided over time with this.
Um, Councilman, I think to directly answer your question in regards to the positions that were eliminated in the 2021 adopted budget, by eliminating those positions, we avoided cost, uh, growth. So if we had not, uh, eliminated those positions, this, the overall, um, budget would be larger and that would require either, uh, a revenue enhancement or the use of reserves. So in terms of how we've discussed the options regarding the P3, um, you know, those are, those are kind of the basic options when we're talking about the budget. You either have to increase your revenue or you have to decrease expense. So to answer your question, the, the positions that were eliminated in the 21 avoided cost growth, which avoided needing to, or, uh, eliminated the need to increase the levy for the 21 budget or do further reductions.
Okay. And then also there was, and, and again, still in the learning curve here, but the overtime that was, um, shut down for uh, firefighters and police, and there had been talk about, you know, possibly using uh, reserves for that, that was not done either, correct?
In the 2020 budget, um, at the, as the public health emergency began, uh, we didn't know the full impact of all the, either the revenue or expense side. And, you know, quite frankly, across the country, we've seen other communities, um, have revenue decline dramatically. And then they've also seen expense go up, um, just related to overtime and different types of responses needed. Um, so in, in terms of what we had anticipated, we did, um, the city manager did request that overtime across the board be restricted and other spending, uh, restrictions in anticipation of a, a worse, um, revenue environment. And as the projections today show, um, this, because economic base seems to be weathering, um, this public health emergency in a way that, um, is, is great for the local economy. Um, but we had to make those decisions pretty early on to ensure that we would be able to respond.
I think I understood what you said, and I would just say thank you, uh, uh, Mayor for you know, your comments on non-use of the reserves, uh, because I would agree as well. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, in a, um, in an attempt to, to move this along, um, I'm going to propose that instead of 5.7 million, we, we, uh, as part of the agreement, we would issue 2.85 million in 15-year bonds. And what that would do is fund them for seven and a half years of their needs. Let them get some of this deferred maintenance out of the way, uh, and, and like to allow for some lumpy distributions of that. So that is the motion. I'm going to make 2.85 million in, in bonds be issued for them.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Additional comments or questions? Councilwoman Hiller?
I, I'm concerned about the conversation that we just had, that if there's not a corresponding commitment to reduce our borrowing, then we're talking about adding a cost to the taxpayers of 300, of 430,000 a year. And, um, however that would, would work out. And I think if, if we're going to be honest with ourselves and the taxpayers about this, if it's a transfer of what we expected to spend on them, then it's got to be part of our $9 million cap. However, that's not done.
Councilman Lesser?
Yeah, you know, the only other thing that there again, that I think we have to keep in mind too is if we don't come up with, with an agreement on that, 380,000 a year in capital, when capital maintenance is going, is going to cost us much more than that every year. So I think we need to keep that in mind as well, moving forward.
Councilwoman Hiller?
A, a concern that I've had along the way, and again, don't get me wrong, because I'm totally supportive of this transfer is the, some of the conversation we've had with the zoo folks, and they've, they've talked about wanting to build new exhibits and so on, and and have done a little bit of talking about a trade-off, that some of the things they thought would be capital maintenance probably wouldn't be because they'd actually be replacing this building with something new. And and that's exciting. But the end of each conversation has been, oh, and if we don't have enough money, we might have to eliminate one of our exhibits. And I just, again, I want us to set up something so that they're totally responsible for that, and it's easy to track how much money they're going to have from us. Because if, maybe we can, I don't even know how many exhibits there are. Let's say there's 40. Maybe even if we change something out and make it nicer, have a different animal over here, the, the, the budget would only ever support 40 instead of having 45 and then coming back to us. I, I just, I worry about that with those conversations.
I think one of the things that I'm going to bring up now too, though, is I, I understand the motion and that does cover them for seven and a half years. I think that, um, given that the, um, the, uh, initial intent was that it would cover a 15-year agreement, I think we're going to need to put a clause somewhere in there regarding when we have a reopeners, so to speak, of discussing with the Fox board regarding a future council that you may not be on seven and a half, seven years from now, that's going to have to figure out how we handle the last seven and a half years of that agreement. And so I think that's a clause that's going to need to be added because this only gets us halfway through the intended timeframe um, regarding the agreed, uh, currently agreed to amount. And so I think we're going to need to craft some language if we're not willing to go with the full 5.7. And I understand your reasons. But we're going to need to add some language in order to make that clear to the Fox board as to how it's going to be handled. to the FOTS board as to how it's going to be handled in six years when, when that's coming up again.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Trout. And I agree. I just think, you know, seven and a half years is plenty of time, I think, for us to see how this agreement is working out. And, and frankly, we might find out that FOTS is going to do such, Representative Patton and, and the others on here, they're going to do such a fantastic job that after seven and a half years, they probably won't want any more money from us. So that, that is my hope. So that's, yeah, that, that was, that was my thought, that this gives them enough stability and kind of runway to be confident they're going to be supported. And, you know, frankly, seven and a half years is a long time for them to figure a lot of things out. Thank you.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. And I, I just wanted to make sure we identify that before we left this topic.
Additional comments or questions? So we have a motion and we have a second, and it's for a partial amount of the dollars, rather than the full amount, and it is to be borrowed as part of our capital program. So at this point in time, 2.7, right? Deputy Mayor, Deputy, Deputy Mayor?
2.85, Mayor, I believe is, is half of the 5.7, yeah. If my math is right. Don't mind anybody checking. I did it here with a pen, but I'm pretty certain that's correct.
Questions?
We get some comments from FOTS.
I asked them to provide comments. But there is a change in the, in the ordinance being proposed, so it would be fair to ask the, the members of FOTS their thoughts on this.
I can, listen, yeah, I can, I can comment real quick. So based on the capital maintenance that, that we have, the years that we believe that, that those are going to need to be coming due, I think that is very reasonable to have half of that available upfront. And, and we can see how that, that works and definitely revisit later, but we would be perfectly comfortable with that.
Representative Patton.
The only thing, I mean, I think I would add is, you know, we've talked about, this is step one. Hopefully there are future funding models that we can consider, you know, maybe spreading out the, the tax base a little bit to support the zoo. So seven years is a long time. I, I agree. I know some of you, I think certainly Councilman Duncan and maybe Dobler brought up the, the issue with other, you know, public-private partnerships you guys have entered into in the past. And, and you've had the entity that you contracted withhold you hostage. And so that's my only concern with the shorter deal is that in seven years, we're back at the table. And, and I don't go anywhere, so I'll still be standing here in front of whoever the council is, saying, well, we've got you stuck now. You know, you committed to seven years, but it's going to cost, you know, 500,000 a year. I, I just, the longer we can do, the better. I think that way the, the dollars are fixed and neither side has to come back to the table. But at seven years, I, or seven and a half, or whatever you just agreed to, I think we'll certainly, you know, make work. And, and this conversation is going to continue. It's going, as I've said time and again, going to continue to be a city zoo. And we want your input as we move forward. So we'll work together to make it happen.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say, this has been a great discussion. But above all, I want to say how beautiful the lights look. And that just goes to show you how the FOTS, they're just thinking outside the box of new ways. And, you know, every time I drive by there, I just get excited when I see all those lights. Although I haven't been through it, I'm, I'm going to. But I, I, I just think that they have done a great job. And I think they will continue to do a great job and take us to a, to a higher level. I will support that, just kind of cautious about the reserves because I, I agree with you. We, we've always really kept that money there. We're not out of the, out of the woods. But, but I, I, I'm just not feeling real, real good about that decision. So that would be my only, only concern. But when you look at all the things that is happening there and all the things that could happen, and I go to zoos all over, just the private partnerships that they have and, and the people that are willing to put in. You know, sometimes when they say, well, that's the cities and that's our responsibility, nobody even wants to do volunteer work. And we have been blessed and haven't had that problem. And so hopefully we can, we can just figure all this out and make this happen. Again, just wanted to give a shout out to the lights. There's still time left. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz, give me a call. We'll get you inside. Don't watch them while you drive down the street. We were dropping my daughter off at dance the other day and saw a car that I think was looking at the lights and they missed the corner and hit a fire hydrant. So quit looking at the lights when you drive down Gage. We'll get you in.
That would not be me. That was not me.
Okay, so we have, we have a clarifying question by Council, by Ms. Lamandola.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make sure I understand the proposal. The, the bond issuance will fund the first seven and a half year of the commitment. Now, will the agreement on the capital side be $380,000 for the full agreement? So the actual management agreement would be $380,000 for the life of the agreement annually?
I'm, I'm not certain I have an opinion on that. I, I would say it's whatever you can get FOTS to agree to. I, this is just to, to get the funding for the first seven and a half years. And again, so much can change in that amount of time. I, I almost think it's sometimes silly to even go 15 years on anything just because, you know, the world can, we've learned the world can change in six months. So seven and a half years, I think is such a long time. And it's going to be plenty of time to figure out the details of that. And, you know, compared to our budget that this is such a, you know, 380,000 is a lot of money. But in comparison to the rest of our budget, it's not. I mean, it's pretty insignificant amount. It'll be a lot less than seven and a half years of our budget. So I'm confident you guys will be able to figure out something then.
Sure. I guess I, I just want to make sure that Lisa and I know, and the city manager, when we're negotiating the contract, we don't want to over commit the city to something that this governing body hasn't agreed to. So in years eight through 15, we're still committing to funding capital in those years. Is that correct?
That, that would be my guess, yeah. This just identifies the source for the first seven and a half years.
Okay, fair enough. And I apologize, I have one other clarifying question. The, 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 the 2.85 million for the first seven and a half, Councilwoman Hiller mentioned, within the existing $9 million cap, is that an accurate description?
That would, that would be my, yes, yes.
Okay, so in 2020, 2021, we would only be issuing 6.2 million? For non-zoo related purposes? So we would need to revisit the CIP?
Yeah, perhaps, yes. Yes. And again, I'm, I'm open to, I don't have, I guess, a firm position on that. I, I know Councilwoman Hiller, and she raised a great point of trying to pay cash as much as we can. It's just here, I think it's important that we give them, you know, when we enter your agreement, we need, we can't have them every year worried that they're not going to have the money or, or they're not. So I just want to give them some surety and it'll help them, help them get ahead of this maintenance curve. That, you know, right now we've gotten behind, it's cost, it's going to cost us a lot more, kind of like Council, Councilwoman Lesser said, it's, we're going to have to pay this whether we do something with them or not. At the end, you got to pay the pirate at some point. We're going to be doing it ourselves if we don't have an agreement with them for them to do it, so.
Absolutely. I just want to make sure I have an understanding of the feedback to give to other departments in terms of needing to cut the existing CIP issuance for 2021. Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I just ask a question to Jessica? Can you tell me what our total of bonded indebtedness is at this time?
I believe the existing GEO debt is 158 million principal. Jeff, I'm looking at your, your memo, so jump in if I, I got that wrong.
That sounds right. I'm pulling it up too, Jessica.
158 million in principal?
Yes, ma'am. And that's in GEO debt, so that what's supported, you know, not utilities related debt.
And a ranking with Moody's is still considered at a good level, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And is there usually a cap for cities our size that you don't want to go pass with that bonded indebtedness?
I wouldn't say that there's a cap on the, the principal value or the par value, where the, where the rating influence becomes more important is its impact on overall operations and your overall cost. So as it climbs as a percentage of your overall spending, that could impact your rating because that limits your, let's say, flexibility to fund other things. Given our current debt load, that 158 million plus what we've communicated to the, the rating agencies in terms of our future plans, and that would include Polk Quincy, I would not anticipate a rating change based on that.
Okay, thank you, Jessica.
Councilwoman Dobler.
Yeah, I, I wondered if, thank you, Mayor, I wondered if Deputy Mayor Emerson would agree to a friendly amendment that would, in essence, not count, not count the two-point-whatever-million against our nine million dollar cap for 2021. Since we're, we're talking about affecting other departments and their ability to meet plans, I, I would, I would ask for that consideration. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, would you like to respond?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, again, I don't have a firm, I don't have a super firm position on that. As, as Mr. White said earlier, we're at historic lows on our, I, I do think the nine main is a great policy. And we've, we've actually, I believe we actually lowered our debt over the last few years through that policy, retiring more debt. However, realizing this is the one-time issuance, I, yeah, I, I would not have a problem with that change, sure. Luckily, I'm not close enough that Councilwoman Hiller can hit me with anything. So I, I would be fine. I would be minimal to that change.
And I would appreciate, sorry to interrupt, I, I would appreciate that change in that modification that Councilman Dobler's brought forward because the CIP has been submitted already at this point by staff for next year. And it's a lot easier, we can work on 2022, making that adjustment. But having, I mean, excuse me, 23's adjustment, but not having to do that for the proposed 2022 would be appreciated.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. This might be time to throw in another thought that I had. We haven't talked about the operating yet, but frankly, between the shortfall that Steph has described and the fact that we would be somewhere in the lines of 370,000 short in, in dollars that had been billed to the zoo's budget that we would not have for our overhead, I don't see anything less than $600,000 gap when we get to the next step and talk about operating. And I say that just as factual, not, you know, as a problem to resolve. Something that I started to look at as we kept talking, because I just wasn't sure we could avoid, I, I don't think anybody wants to raise taxes, which nobody's talked about tonight, or, you know, not property taxes or middle levy. People don't want to dip into the reserve. We don't want to borrow more than we were. Right now, we are bringing in, in round numbers, about 15 million a year in the half-cent sales tax. Point oh five, half of a, half of a tenth of a, of a cent, sales tax would generate 1.5 million dollars. And I'm wondering if we shouldn't consider putting on the ballot for next November, a point oh five cent sales tax for the zoo. I think frankly, it would be popular and would probably pass. And it would provide them more money than we're talking about right now and not impact our operating or our debt service budgets. Just something to think about. And in fact, overall, what I've thought is that maybe if, if we did point one, a tenth of a cent, it would be $3 million a year, which again, I think a tenth of a cent the voters might go for. And it would really let them take off at that point. There's been some talk about the bus and also the, the housing trust fund. And if those were at point oh five each, it would be pretty minimal. And together, they would only be point two. Not, I think the zoo would pass. I'm not sure the others would right away. But, and, and I know that it's a tax, but it's borne by much more broadly. And it might resolve the issues of the fact that I don't think we can avoid, if, if we don't want to cut into things, I don't think we can avoid this money that's being discussed right now coming out of something else. We could put money on the table just for the first year to get us through that election cycle. But long-term, that's maybe a better way to go.
Councilman Duncan.
I was just going to point out, and I appreciate the comments from Councilmember Hiller, and that's definitely a decision. But we, we have a motion and a second on the floor, and I think we're straying from that. So I would like to bring us back to where we are on that motion before we discuss the other. Thank you.
Okay, so the motion that we have on the floor is to issue 2.85 million dollars in bonds so that we are able to take care of the capital expenditures for seven years for the Topeka Zoo. There should be at some point, some discussion for language for us to revisit the other seven years. And that will be brought back by the council body in consultation, in consultation with FOTS. So that's the current motion on the floor. Yes, yes, Deputy Attorney.
I believe was the motion for seven and a half years? It would get you halfway through the 15 years, right?
I am so sorry, yeah, seven and a half.
And it would not count towards the nine million?
And it would not count towards the nine million cap.
Okay, gotcha. I'm with you.
All right. So that's our motion. We've had a lot of conversations. If there is no further conversation, we would proceed with the vote.
Mayor De La Esa?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
No.
Valdivia Aquila?
No.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have eight yes. Councilmembers Hiller and Valdivia Aquila voting no, the motion passes.
All right, at this point in time, it's past our customary eight o'clock break. Let's take a seven or eight minute break here so that people get a chance to stretch their legs, get up. And then we'll reconvene the meeting. So around 8:30, 38, 39. Thank you.